Seven o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening, and welcome to the February 13th, 2024 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate Item I for matters that are germane to City Council. Light system, three minutes. On our podium, we have a light system. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. After three minutes, the red light will appear, and we ask that you take your seat. The City Code identifies the procedure of participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda, and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council means that matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, organization. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion, Pastor Tremaine Johnson of Zion Baptist Church will lead us in invocation. Afterwards, Councilman Long will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It is the practice of council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you, Pastor.
Let us bow heads. Oh Lord, our God, thank you for another day. Thank you for keeping us and directing our path that we may come into this space and place tonight. And thank you for the Spirit of unity. Thank you for your power divine. Thank you for life, health, and strength even in this moment. I pray for the continued success and growth and wellness of our city. I pray for our leadership, our mayor, this council, and all who consume in this place. Lead us, guide us, and direct us. And oh God, I pray that the Spirit of love will continue to hover over this house. There's a reason that we are here tonight because we join in one people, one body. And thank you for being our Lord. Guide us, lead us, direct us, and keep us. And we continue to give your name the praise. Amen.
Will you follow me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, do I have a motion to excuse Councilman Harris from this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Public hearings, page three. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance vacating an existing drainage and utility easement across property located between 12833 Jefferson Avenue and 27 Buchanan Drive. The City Manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
E1, yes sir. Jeremy Wee.
Mr. Jeremy Wee.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Jeremy Wee with Kimmy Hong. Address is 4525 Main Street, Suites 1000, Virginia Beach. I'm here on behalf of my clients, SKS Holding LLC. We would like to request your approval to vacate the existing 10-foot drainage and other utility easement on the subject properties to allow the proposed developments. I'm here to answer any question you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
We're good, sir. Thank you. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilwoman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following item. Page seven, minutes of the work session of January 23rd, 2024. Page 41, minutes of the regular meeting of January 23rd, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, item F1 and F2, all inclusive?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other City Council actions, page 58, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution for the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority for the benefit of the Kali Phase 1 project at 129th Street in an amount not to exceed $8 million. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bill Nosbaum for questions only. Mr. David Staley for questions only.
Questions from City Council? Okay, I think we're good, thank you. Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Page 71, item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution for the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority for the benefit of the Coyle, not Kali, Coyle Phase 1 project at 31133rd Street in an amount not to exceed $8 million, and I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bill Nosbaum and Mr. David Staley for questions only.
Do we have any questions at this time? Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I just would, I would like to say as we are voting on these two projects, to thank you all for, the developers for this because at a time such as this, when housing costs are getting extremely exorbitant, we can see that there's so much of a need for affordable housing and quality affordable housing. So thank you so much.
Thank you. At this time, please call the roll.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Page 84, item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate a standard project administration agreement between the City and the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Grant Program funded citywide signal system progression project. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes. Does this include timing the lights? Mr.?
Mr., yes, Mr. Glant, if you could address the question, please? Yes, please come forward. I want you to hear his answer now.
Is it gonna be different?
It might.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Yes, it actually does address the timing of some of the lights. What it is, it's our Gridsmart system, part of that system, which will actually address a variety of things. It collects data, and that'll help us determine what the timing needs to be at certain intersections. But, so it does address, it will address it, but it'll only address certain locations because we can't do all of them all at one time. Where it's an integrated process over a series of years that will get to various intersections. It won't be all of them done all at one time.
Well, what about the ones that are done now? I mean, there are some that are timed, are they not?
Yeah, oh, they're all timed, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, when people are sitting at stoplights, running.
Yeah, and that's the whole point of this, this system that we're putting in, an upgraded system. So actually, we can collect better data and move all the vehicles and so forth better through all the intersections that we have throughout the city.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Page 98, item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4 is a request, excuse me, to approve a resolution appropriating $1,250,000 of Virginia Department of Transportation Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant Program funds for the citywide signal system progression project. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Page 101, item G5, Mr. Manager.
Item G5 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 3, Advertising, Article 1, in general, Section 3-6, painting or marketing advertisements, signs, et cetera, on streets and sidewalks. I recommend adoption of the ordinance.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes. I wanna know, can you give me an example of where they are painted on the street?
Yes, I'm gonna allow Owen to speak a little bit more detail, but I think the notion here is that as we begin to explore more and more with outdoor art and other types of beautification efforts that make the city attractive and vibrant, this amendment allows us the flexibility of using the streets for markings and for beautification efforts that we currently don't have the flexibility to pursue.
So, I mean, give me an example of what you would paint on the street, I mean.
So, if we decided to paint Dr. Woodbury on the street, that would be approved now, right?
Or, or.
Absolutely. It'd be a great idea, too.
Or, or a three, or a 3D mural that you see sometimes painted on a flat surface.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. I support this for sure.
Public art, public art.
If that's only gonna support it because you gave that example now.
That's exactly right.
Because I'm a genius.
Good evening, Council. So this, this came up a few years ago when we were looking at a number of opportunities. Bloomberg Philanthropies, for example, has an asphalt art grant, which has been pretty successful around the country. During that time, when we were actually looking at that opportunity, it came to our attention that some of the existing ordinances likely would make it challenging, if not impossible, for us to, to actually paint something like that, regardless of the subject matter on the public right away. And so we wanted to just take an opportunity to make some relatively minor changes to make it clear that the city or a contractor directed by the city has the authority to actually do this. So we have, we've not discussed what a potential art installation could look like.
For instance, would, if they painted something out in front of City Hall on the street, is that an example of what?
It certainly could be, yeah.
Oh, so I have a chance?
Indeed.
But it still, it will still be approved by the city. It will have the city's stamp on it. So I think this is, this is a good opportunity for us, especially when arts and culture are a huge part of who we are, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Appropriations, page 104, item H, Mr. Manager.
We have one appropriation this evening. The appropriation is to request to approve a resolution appropriating $557,629 a fiscal year 2024 Virginia Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Grant Program funds for the citywide flashing yellow arrows project.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve, item H1.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Give me an example of where these yellow things are.
So, again, I'll rely on Mr. Glant as backup, but.
Sorry.
But this is, this is essentially continuing our effort to provide flashing yellow arrows.
But where is one now?
Oh, we have, we have, we have many throughout the city.
All right.
Yeah, for individuals who are.
Welcome back.
Turning left.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. There are a variety of them. Example that I can give you right now, and it's a phoetic, right at where the YMCA is, to turn left into the YMCA is an example of a flashing yellow there. It's not a dedicated green, so it's not one where it actually you get the green arrow that then that traffic that's turning left can turn left on the green and nobody else has a movement. This one is, once the, the actual through movements can go through, and it's, it's a solid green on both sides, it's a flashing yellow up there on the left hand. There is a left-hand turn lane for it.
Are we going north or south?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're going north.
All right.
You're going north. So that's one, that's, that's an example.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments, item I. Comments on matters that are germane to council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. We have 25 speakers, so we're gonna make sure we all use the three-minute red, yellow, green on the top. But first, I wanna do some prerogative and call the youth adult police commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Massimiliano Ariano, a co-president for the Young Adult Police Commissioners. I'm here with my co-president, Marlena Kuzmenzik, and my Assistant Secretary, Brock Rash. The Young Adult Police Commissioners, or YAPC, is a youth advisory board that is conducted in partnership with the City of Newport News Public Schools and the Newport News Police Department. This board was created by the Chiefs of Police in 2018 to build a better relationship between the Newport News Police Department and the youth in the City of Newport News. YAPC normally consists of 24 youth representing one student per grade level of the six Newport News high schools. We were recommended by the school principals, counselors, and Newport News Police School Resource Officers. This is the first, first year we have had 40 YAPC students. The Young Adult Police Commissioner provides us an opportunity to have a voice in the city about issues that affect us. Our motto is bringing youth to the conversation. This problem, this program also provides opportunities for youth to partner with police on problem-solving strategies and discuss policing in general to give them a better understanding of what the police department does.
The Young Adult Police Commissioners helps us build relationships with the police officers. We learn from them and they learn from us. YAPC allows us to have a voice and opinions on topics that we discuss about current events that are happening in our city. This year, YAPC, we have utilized, in YAPC, we have utilized the district driver and fatal vision goggles to understand the consequences of texting and drinking while driving. We participated in drone flying and practiced interview skills with NMPD Police Information Office team. As community helpers, we assisted at the Martin Luther King Day food drive, assisted with the Christmas for the children with Dr. Cherry, and giving back to the community clothing and toy drive. A YAP student is given the opportunity to speak at the Newport News Police Department Basic Telecommunication Academy graduation, basic law enforcement graduations, and police promotion ceremony. I've had the opportunity to be a guest speaker. This opportunity allows us to bring the gap, bridge the gap between the police stereotype and the youth in the community. Ultimately, YAPC helps us with social skills, life skills, and choices, career-building skills, college skills, and always allows us to have a voice and be heard. Thank you for, for affording, affording this, us, this opportunity to speak before you this evening.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Lily Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Council. Happy New Year's, thank you very much. Mayor Jones, I'm only gonna be a few minutes. I've been over here, coming over here almost past 18 months. I was here the same time last year. I really appreciate you coming out there.
I came out, right?
Yes, you did. You showed up and stuff. So that's why I'm just here with this, because I need each one of these ones to see what you saw and more, because they have to do something about this over there. I'm not gonna take up time and stuff, I know they got a lot going on, and I know about Israel and all that, but I want them to know what's going on here. And if you could just pass it down there real quick, I'm gonna take it back home with me, go across that cold bridge, because it's cold out there tonight, I roll across it. So I'm just asking you to pass it down for y'all to look at it, and then when I get back from Georgia, because I gotta get out here and march and everything, because it's too much. And, oh, we're discussing, I'm trying to get in touch with Bobby Scott there. I already went to the general assembly and everything with the program and stuff, and talked to some of them up there, but they was in council. So just like pass it down, I just want them to see this is where that young man, who wasn't even born when all this stuff happened, came out there and stuff and saw me and tried to help me out.
We'll pass it out.
Yeah.
We got you.
Pass it down so they can see it before I leave.
I got you. I got you, I'll make sure, I, I came out to the house, I'll be, I'll make sure they see it, I promise. I promise.
I, I, well, I'm gonna come back and pick it up tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I'm leaving Thursday, but George, I'm serious, because we need help, we need Congress guy and everything. It's so much wrong down in New Canoo, and they're building stuff that's not even credible. We are suffering in them new buildings, and they continue building. We want to make sure that we don't have to go through there. But look at them, I need a back.
Do you want us to initial that we've seen them?
No, I want you to see them first, then initial. Oh, I ain't saying that, nope, nope. And so hold on to all them. When I come back from Georgia and stuff, for my 78 birthday.
Happy birthday.
Because I can't keep riding over here, and then they got me in Richmond. When I caught that bus, that bus had the, the night they have a lift on it going to Richmond. Y'all just seen that driver and my niece lift me up on one leg going up there. But the part about I had to think of a plan. So when we got to Richmond, I and Dee had a blanket. And if y'all could see me scooting there and get to the end of standing on one, because we need help. We need help. And I can't live there no more, my health and everything won't, won't, won't take it. So I'll see you as soon as I get back, my sister first. Hold on to my pictures with your life. And thank you, Chief Chu and troublemaker. I told y'all I was gonna be nice tonight.
We appreciate it.
All right and stuff, and I hope everything work out with Israel and God.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Well, we'll go in order now. Fred Levy?
Hi, can everybody, guess, people can hear me great. Thank you very much, esteemed members of council. I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm speaking tonight on the Israel-Gaza conflict, and I, I just wanted to share, first of all, that I appreciate council not spending its valuable time with issues beyond Newport News. And I also think it's very important that no member of council should be threatened for any reason on its own views about the Israeli conflict. And I could not feel more strongly about that. First of all, Israel has a right to defend itself. And as a resident of Newport News, I oppose any ceasefire resolution in that region without the immediate release of the hostages. Hamas is an internationally recognized terrorist organization. It doesn't even necessarily represent the majority of Palestinians. I lament the loss of Israeli life, I lament the loss of Palestinian lives. It's a great tragedy, what's happening. And by the way, I realized, I forgot to give my address. I'm Fred Levy, 11 Sherberg Drive in our fair city. Any loss of life in that region is, is a great tragedy. But I have a great antipathy towards any organization that, that, that region of the world who's stated goal is to drive Israel into the sea. And ceasefire is a bad idea because at this time, because not only it doesn't not guarantee the release of the hostages, but it simply would give the butchery that initiated the conflict on October 7th a chance for Hamza, to Hamas rather, I'm sorry, to rearm itself and start the butchery and savagery all over again. Like most Americans, I don't want to see a ceasefire until the, until the hostages are returned. And more than anything else, under the proper conditions, I only want what most Americans want, which is peace, and only when that peace can be, can be secured. Thank you very much for letting me speak, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Angela Harris? And thank you to our police commissioners for coming out. Thank you.
So, cut the light on. Let me know, have y'all thought about giving us five minutes instead of three? Because it's not enough time, you don't answer any questions. So I've been coming here for 30 years with my elders, with everybody. Some still here with us, some deceased, and I'm not understanding now more than ever what's going on in the city. And when Ms. Ann have to ride over here and she's still complaining, and I don't understand. And I know a few people have, everything has changed, I don't see anyone that's familiar other than Allen, Ms. Woodbury, of course, Ms. Washington. And, you know, of course, Ms. Tina, because she's from the community, and John's from the community. the community. But it's something going on wherein my grandchild was punched in the face by a security guard at Warwick High School. We went over and took charges out. He was never arrested. Now, that security guard, instead of doing the right thing, he took my grandchild in the bathroom and made him clean the blood off his face. Another security guard went in and found my grandson and said, "No, baby, don't, don't, don't wipe the evidence. Let me take you to the nurse." When I get there to Warwick High School, the raiders, Bersan is gone. No police is called. He's bleeding. He bust his nose and his lips on that ground, on the school ground, and was allowed to leave. I pressed charges on that man while he wasn't arrested. Then I get some mail saying that the Commonwealth is pressing charges on my grandson for being punched in the face. Now, my grandson is a big dude, tall dude and everything. He said to me, "Grandma, I just don't feel right because I'm caught up." He couldn't defend himself, because if he had defended himself, all those security guards would have jumped on. Y'all know that. I don't know what's going on, but somebody better find out what's going on, because that security guard Bersan was born and raised in the southeast community with us. His motherhouse is still in the community. Bersan works for Carter Funeral Home. Bersan, you know better. He's older than me. He won't even fight my uncles, my brothers. Come on. How you going to jump four generations and hit my grandchild? And what are we going to do about it? We got shootings, all that, at Rich Net. Can't do nothing about it. Won't give the teachers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Proper stuff. Come on, y'all. Help the baby.
Thank you.
30 years, we still can't get no help for our children.
Tim Lamb?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city officials. My name's Tim Lamb. I'm resident of the city of Newport News. I reside on Mississauga Drive. I'm here before you tonight to speak about House Bill 1446 that was before the delegates in our house, State House, this year. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers and as the Chair of the 2024 Legislative Committee. This bill was introduced to amend the state code for valuation of affordable housing. The bill as it is, excuse me, the statute as it exists clearly defines the methodology. And with appropriate training of those individuals who assess real property, the amendments set forth are truly unnecessary. The bill in itself stands in conflict with other statutes in the state of Virginia and the general accepted appraisal practices internationally. I have not done a feasibility or financial study, but clearly the limitations set forth by the bill would have a fairly significant impact on the city of Newport News and other jurisdictions throughout the state. It's with pleasure that I say that through the coalition of the Virginia Association of Assessing Officers and statewide Commissioners of Revenue, we successfully stood in opposition to the bill. The bill was continued until 2025 and is under study, is set to be under study within the Virginia Housing Committee. The reason I come here is to ask each of you to become familiar with the content of that bill and express your concerns to the Housing Commission. Okay? I additionally would respectfully request that you ask the city manager to direct our city attorney to review the content of HB 1446 and express the impact that it will have on our local staffing, the financial impact of our tax role, and the precedent that it may set for other states nationally. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Soha Amir?
My name is Soha Amir. I have worked in the city of Newport News since 2016, and I am actively employed there currently. Every paycheck, I see my pay stubs and the money I pay in taxes to the state and to the federal government, and I know where that tax money goes. It goes to bombing innocent civilians, men, women, and children in Gaza that our tax dollars pay for, everybody in this room, and their blood is on our hands. I see a human in each and every single one of you. I want you to look inwards to yourself. Have any of you seen the images coming out of Gaza? Do you even care to see the images coming out of Gaza? Does it affect you? Do you care because they don't look like you, because they are not the same religion as you? They practice a different faith? I cannot stand here and excuse my actions here, because I live in a country where it is okay to give foreign aid to an illegal nation that bombs innocent civilians. I want you to go home at night and look at any individual in Gaza right now. They upload their lives for us to see. All they ask is for us to bear witness, and some of you still refuse to do so. So I stand here tonight to ask that you call for a ceasefire, an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, because I refuse to stand here and stay silent, and I hope you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody doing day?
Good.
Look, happy new year to everybody this way. I'm up here because I need y'all help. Last year around this time, my church, Gassimini Baptist Church, Bishop Riddick, we started a soccer league. We partnered with the YMCA. That way, we can reach all different race of kids. We have been a success. We doing basketball now at the church. We opened up our church for basketball and for volleyball with Huntington Middle School. I've been going out into the community, trying to reach kids all over in the southeast community, because we are hurting, our children are dying. So much gun violence and everything that's going on in the southeast community, really all over the world. But I'm here for the southeast community, because that's where I live. I grew up and was raised downtown Newport News. That's what they called it. I seen Pinky Beach was a beautiful beach, came to, it became King Lincoln Park, Anderson Park, or baseball field. I grew up playing baseball there. So reason why I'm here this evening is that I need other churches to partner with us. I went from church to church, talking to the pastors and talking to the secretaries and because Bishop told me, he said, "Mo, if I mail it, it might just sit in a pile on the desk." So he said, "Look, let's go out and just give it to them in the hand." And most churches, you know, they say since COVID, we lost all our youth. Well, we lost a lot of youth too at Gassimini, but I put boots on the ground. I went to apartment complex. I waited outside the school ground, off the school ground, passing out flyers. And I was able to sign up over 80-plus kids, and only five of them members of Gassimini. So reaching the children, you can change lives, right? Not only would you change the children's lives, the parents and the grandparents. If we don't get out here in the community and reach out, then we're going to lose. I don't care what you build, houses, apartments, they're going to turn it down. So I need the churches to come together. And I know I might get some backlash on this, because I say churches coming together, but churches are hurting, far as coming together, we all have our own agenda. But I know Mayor Philip Jones and City Council, I mean Vice Mayor and the council members, y'all can bring them together, because I think y'all meet with them anyway, once or twice a year. I don't know how many times y'all meet. We need help so we can have our beach back. We need help so we can have our Anderson Park baseball field.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. My talk. God bless y'all.
Patrick Dooley?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Patrick Dooley. I live at 1693 Monterey Place, and I'd like to speak today in support of the ceasefire resolution between the state of Israel and the state of Palestine. Israel's committing a genocide that's ongoing and against the people of Gaza and the West Bank. It's funded by our tax dollars. I'd like to share figures from the U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights to take the state of Virginia's federal income tax amount and divide that by the total federal income tax of fiscal year 2020, multiply that by the total federal annual allocation of military funding to Israel. In Virginia, $106 million of Virginia's taxpayer dollars have been supplied to Israel in the amount of weapons that could instead fund 12,621 households with public housing for a year, 36,941 children receiving a free or low-cost health care, 1,159 elementary school teacher salaries, 2,809 students with loan debt canceled. In Newport News, $2.7 million to Israel's weapons could instead fund 325 households with public housing for a year, 953 children receiving free or low-cost health care, 29 elementary school teacher salaries, 72 students with their loan debt canceled. This past Super Bowl Sunday, the latest attack occurred in Rafah, a city in southern Gaza where Israel told Palestinians to evacuate to before proceeding to bomb them, killing 95 civilians, including 42 children. Amnesty International found that there was no evidence of military targets at Rafah. Over 27,000 Palestinians have been killed by Israel's genocide, and it's provided by our tax dollars that's been funding it in the past 120 days in particular, but it predates that as well. I'd like to end with a quote from a prominent human rights activist and Muslim, Malcolm X. "You can't separate peace from freedom, because no one can be at peace unless he has his freedom. Free Palestine. Sign the resolution for a ceasefire now." Thank you.
Thank you.
Peace and blessings to everybody. Sorry I'm not dressed accordingly. It came kind of last minute, but I came here to address a few issues. The first one is the missing persons crisis that's going on in Newport News, more specifically African-American women going missing, and there being little to no action. We're working now with a few families. Ms. Cherie Brown has been missing since October, and her family is still asking for solutions. Another girl by the name of Brittany Shields that I know personally has been missing since December, and we haven't been able to see anything transpire as far as that. It seems that we have to hold a press conference or a protest in front of the police headquarters to have any type of response, and it shouldn't take all that. We have some good news. We championed the Cody Alert to help find missing kids, and that was passed through the Virginia House and Senate just last week. I personally helped write that with Chief Drew and Senator Danny Diggs out of Vacosa. And so we also know Newport News championed the Andre Alert. That's for missing disabled. So it would appear that we have an issue, and I don't like to come here and just present problems. I would like to be a part of the solution. Chief Drew can let you know that we have successfully found a 14-year-old teenage girl. She was in the house of an older-aged man where she should not have been. We put boots on the ground and found them ourselves. Through our social media handles, we've been able to find somebody going through a mental health crisis. Our channel was used, and they were found in Richmond from a flyer that we shared. We do graphic designs. We put boots on the ground. And so if there is some type of resolution that can be had for us to be directly involved, specifically with that one need of the city in finding missing individuals, we would love to help fill that void, because we know everybody has so much going on. I also support the resolution to, for the ceasefire over in Palestine. You know, nobody is free until we are all free. We should not be sending money, and now we're about to send, I don't know how many billions to Israel and Ukraine, where we still have a property issue that's just out of this world here in Newport News and all throughout the United States of America. So if it comes across you all as death that you're able to help in that, we're asking that you do so. Free Palestine.
Thank you. Wendy Eisner?
Good evening, members of Newport News City Council. My name is Wendy Eisner, and I am President of the United Jewish Community of the Virginia Peninsula located at 301 City Center Boulevard. I oppose any stand that Newport News City Council would make on international conflicts, especially those which, excuse me, which foster division in the local community. The city council should be spending its very valuable time on the issues that affect our city, but not international. I support Israel's right to defend itself in a war it did not start or want. As a leader of the Jewish community of Newport News, I do oppose any ceasefire resolution. The Newport News community has been in Newport News since the early 1880s. That's how long the Jewish community has been established in this city. On October 7th, Hamas committed unthinkable acts of butchery without shame or remorse. It has boasted that, given the opportunity, it will repeat October 7th again and again. There is every indication that Hamas does not want to end this war, but will use a ceasefire to regroup and rearm itself. I do not support a ceasefire unless the hostages are returned and Hamas is removed from power. I abhor the loss of innocent life, whether it is Jewish, Arab, Israeli, or Palestinian. War is horrible and terrible, and every single day I wake up for peace and pray that this war ends. Our hearts go out to those who have lost loved ones in Gaza, and I mourn the loss of all innocent life across the world. However, an immediate ceasefire would guarantee future war, bloodshed, and suffering to both Israelis and Palestinians. I would like to reiterate, on behalf of myself and the Jewish community of Newport News, my opposition to any resolution supporting a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Sadler?
And once again, we are here proposing the same thing we always have from city to city about this housing crisis for the unhoused. We've asked you to sign on to our letter publicly, and here I have copies for you all, each and every one. Supporting the need for, thank you, supporting the need for a shelter on the peninsula. We did that January 19th, and that has not been responded to. The Hampton Roads region has experienced a dramatic increase in the cost of living, making it harder and harder for everyday families to make ends meet. At the same time, the number of unhoused individuals and housing insecure families in the region are also on the rise. And without a commitment from our elected officials to invest the necessary resources to address the problem, the problem is only going to get worse. And I'm speaking of the American Rescue Plan Act. The ARPA of 2021 authorized $350 billion state and local fiscal recovery fund, which provided $65.1 billion in direct, flexible aid to every county in America. Hampton and Newport News received approximately $48 million and $66 million respectively. And while a case can be made, the use of these funds have been put to good use in some instances, there remain serious issues related to the access to affordable housing and homelessness to where ARPA funds could have a significant and positive impact going forward. At Virginia Organizing, we're waging an effort to address the problems of affordable housing and homelessness across the state by engaging with elected officials to commit portions of the ARPA funds to be invested in real and meaningful ways. We strongly believe those federal relief dollars are an opportunity to invest in people and communities that are struggling and need those resources. The most, and the federal dollars that we're provided are an opportunity to do just that. Budget choices are value choices, and we believe it's important to bolster the safety net for unhoused individuals and families. We also understand that much of the ARPA funds are budgeted but aren't yet obligated. Now is the time for our elected officials to prioritize the spending of unspent ARPA dollars for the fiscal year 2025 budget.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Edwin Boone.
Good evening. My name is Edwin Boone. This is Black History Month, so I wrote a poem about Black History Month. You thought you killed my brother. Born to die. We all are here, afraid of death. I have no fear. Believe it when I tell you, his dream shall come true. A gift from God, his thought-provoking life, sacrificing his all. He helped to eliminate strife, confused and vicious cycle forced upon us. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. showed us his trust. He trusted that God would make a way, guided by God's divine spirit. He would not let us stray. So much to be grateful for. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. gave us his purpose, goal, and life, so that we cannot ignore. Taken away from me suddenly. I miss my brother. His face was so encouraging in times of trouble. His feet walked a path that mine shall follow. His chosen words helped to guide me to righteousness. You've taken away my flesh and blood. His body no longer exists, but his spirit lives within me. You thought you killed my brother. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Clayton Ty. I'm with the Human Services Advisory Board, and I'm also representing Veterans for Peace.
Could you raise that up a little bit, so we can think better?
Yes, I'm with the Human Services Advisory Board, and I'm also representing Veterans for Peace. I'm here to speak on two separate issues. One is a regional homeless shelter. I read the minutes from the January meeting and saw that City Council punted on wanting a local shelter, and then just pretty much gave it up to a study to the Local Investment Support Corporation. And I looked them up, and I don't agree with their, you know, they have $1.4 billion in assets. Their board of director reads like a who's who of everybody that has no clue of what it's like to experience homelessness, let alone fix it. Same thing with the Bloomberg Initiative. I don't agree with it. It just seems like the city is letting other people figure out problems we can figure out for ourselves. And just, you know, everything with Palestine and seeking a ceasefire resolution, it just seems that our city is answering to special interest groups and not its constituents. And, you know, if the camera could pan behind me, there'd be 25 people right here on this right side that have shown up week after week, you know, to demand a ceasefire resolution. And these are the people that you should be listening to, not people that are so disconnected from what's going on in our city. And, you know, I would really implore you to reconsider a ceasefire resolution. Countless other communities are doing it, large cities, Chicago, Oakland, you know, what are we waiting for? Thankfully, we have a new city attorney. Maybe you could advise council on that it's not such a bad idea, that, you know, we want to get ahead of the curve and stand for humanity. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Eglberg, sorry, David Eglberg, sorry if I said any of these names incorrectly.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is David Eglberg. I live on Winter Haven Drive here in Newport News. I thank you for the opportunity to share a thought or two with you. One of the earlier presenters asked that you bear witness to what is taking place, but I would ask you to bear witness as well. I want you to bear witness, and I would ask those that asked you to bear witness if they would bear witness to the atrocities that took place on October 7th, to the brutal murders, to the repeated rapes, to the murder of children. They ask you to see, but they don't want you to see everything. They asked and said that they saw your humanity. I want you to see the humanity of those that were tortured and abused and murdered. I want you to see the humanity of every single person who is threatened by Hamas. I want you to see my humanity. Because if Hamas has its way, I wouldn't be here. You can see the humanity in everyone. That is what God demands of us. We cannot allow ourselves to be misguided into saying, "These are right, and these humans are not." These humans deserve to be recognized and seen, and these do not. This call for a ceasefire, there was a ceasefire in place on October 6th, and it was violated and broken in a brutal and horrific massacre by Hamas. And the ceasefire that was broken before that one was broken by Hamas. And if you vote in favor of this one, the one thing I can guarantee is that the next one will be broken by Hamas, because they don't recognize the humanity of others. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Van Tyn.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Council. I'm Lucy Van Tyn, 105 Cannon Drive, Newport News. I'm here tonight to advocate on behalf of Virginia Organizing for a regional emergency overnight shelter. A week ago Monday, I was on Warwick Boulevard near the intersection of Young's Mills Lane near Oyster Point Boulevard, when I was approached by a woman and her three children, one of whom was in a stroller. She asked if I knew where there was an overnight shelter in Newport News that she and her family could stay in. She said she couldn't find one. I told her to look up PORT on the internet, and it would give her information. I explained that the city of Newport News had an agreement with local churches, and they took turns providing overnight shelter, a hot supper, and a bag breakfast to those needing help finding a place to stay. Their bus came, and as they got on it, I shouted again, "PORT!" She said she Googled on her phone as she hurried to board the bus. I Googled it myself, too, PORT Newport News, to see if it did indeed pop up, and it did, and I was thankful for that. PORT, which is run with the help of the nonprofit Link, is a pretty good program when it is in operation. PORT has serious shortcomings, though. Here are a few. PORT is expensive for our local churches to run. Reimbursements from the city don't cover all the costs the churches incur. In our gig economy, many young people don't have time or resources to commit to a church family. PORT volunteers are getting older with fewer young people available to pick up the reins. PORT changes locations frequently, and some of the churches are not on a bus route. Both of these factors make it difficult for people to get to the overnight shelter. Most importantly, PORT only operates November through March. What if that mother and her family had approached me on a hot day in August, seeking information about an emergency overnight shelter? I was checking out the populations of Hampton and Newport News, and I was surprised to discover that together Hampton and Newport News are much larger in population than the city of Norfolk. Imagine that. Hampton and Newport News need to recognize that together we are an urban community of 322,000 people, 100,000 more citizens than the city of Norfolk. A third of a million folks reside here on the peninsula. Together, we can provide basic year-round services to all. Housing is not an option, it's a necessity. Hampton and Newport News need to come together and create a regional facility that is open year-round to all and provides a bed, a hot supper, and a breakfast to those of us here on the peninsula who are experiencing homelessness, either run by a regional governmental authority or partnership with a nonprofit like the excellently-run and non-proselytizing Judeo-Christian Outreach Center in Virginia Beach, which provides emergency as well as supportive housing. We have a new Hampton Newport News Regional Animal Shelter that is very nice. Our unhoused citizens in Newport News and Hampton deserve no less. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Manzalak.
Mayor, fine elected city council members, and happy Valentine's Day Eve to all. My reason for my three minutes is to bring attention and enlightenment to two of the city recreational jewels. The Deer Run Golf Course, the Deer Run Championship, and Cardinal Golf Courses. They're located in the largest city park east of the Mississippi. These courses bring team-building, skills of sport, not to mention the tourism venue that tens of millions of people come to the Hampton Roads and our city each year. But you must all know these facts. So what brings me here tonight? Well, the state of these jewels needs serious attention. Most specifically, the 96 sand traps. Each need funding additional for sand replenishment and its maintenance. Those who golf know that while you're playing, you shouldn't be in these hazards. But I'm going to tell you, even professionals go into these particular challenges on the You may not know this fact, I just learned it recently. These courses for our city have 60,000 to 65,000 rounds of golf played on those courses each year. So, there's going to be some balls in those hazards. Women, men, boys and girls of all races play these courses. I play it at least twice a week. Golfers from high school, golfers from business owners that bring clients, visitors that we bring to our city.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I'll extend, I'll take you for a round of golf or on the golf course to see these if you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sahin Nanez.
I would first like to ask if it's okay if my friends who join me can walk to this side, since the camera is showing this side, and I would like our demonstration to be shown.
You can only do the three minutes, ma'am.
I understand. That's why I'm asking, can they move over to this side?
Just the three minutes.
So, okay.
I got it.
Evening, Honorable Mayor Jones. God willing, I will be using my three minutes to ask you a series of questions. You are free to answer them or not. Could you clarify the meaning of the acronym AIEF? AIEF stands for the American Israel Education Foundation. Could you inform me about your affiliation with AIEF? Is it true that the American Israel Education Foundation made a donation to your campaign? Is it true that the American Israel Education Foundation was the second-largest donor to your political campaign? And lastly, has your involvement with the American Israel Education Foundation been... And lastly, has your involvement with the American Israel Education Foundation influenced this council's decision in not having passed a ceasefire resolution thus far? I'm Sayan Nanyas. For those who don't know me, I am an honorably discharged Navy veteran, full-time student, activist, and I currently do not have a permanent residence. I would use, like to use my last minute to highlight Black History Month. It is noted in history, from what I read, that Abraham Lincoln's decision was not popular. Dr. Patricia Woodbury, you said here the last time I spoke that it is this council's, something around the lines, I can't quote you exactly, it is this council's responsibility to consider all sides. When Abraham Lincoln made the decision to free enslaved people, he had states that didn't even associate with the United States anymore. They considered themselves a separate entity, and he made the decision anyway. And so many members of this council are benefiting from it. So much of humanity is benefiting from it. I encourage this council to think about all the unarmed civilians who are unjustly being collectively punished right now, and to try to make what is, in my opinion, the right decision. Thank you.
I would ask that we're only going to let people move once, so you can stay, you can move back. Everyone is going to get their three minutes, but it's not going to be a time to move back and forth. So if we're here, I'm fine with that, but that's, that's where we're going to go to. Next up is going to be Aznith Jamot. Apologies if that's incorrect.
It's actually Aznith Jamot, but I appreciate you for trying to say it correctly. I was going to come up here and speak on the children who are orphaned in Gaza. I was going to give you a specific story, but I ended up changing my mind after hearing a lot of propaganda from other people that have spoken tonight. The people that stood up here, spreading the propaganda and the lies about Hamas and innocent Palestinians, making it seem as though they deserve what's happening to them. Almost 30,000 killed since this conflict began on October 7th. But the thing is, it didn't begin on October 7th. It began 1948, and it's been going on every year since then. Countless Palestinians have died, and it's not just in Gaza. It's also in the West Bank, where Hamas doesn't even exist. It's also in other neighboring countries because they're Palestinians. But we'll talk about Gaza, because Israel actually bombed Gaza on October 6th. There wasn't a ceasefire then. Furthermore, they bombed on October 2005, January 2006, June 2006, December 2008, November 2012, July through August of 2014, March 2018, May 2021, and August 2022. I do not stand with the evil genocidal occupiers. So for the person that said most Americans do, wrong. Mayor, we're urging you to please call for a ceasefire resolution. I don't know how any person on this council can see the things that I've seen. Literally two days ago, I saw a 13-year-old child whose body was half-blown off, hanging from a wire after their home, not even their home, I'm sorry, it was in Rafa, their tent was blown apart. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a map illustrating Palestine's changing landscape over the past 75 years. In 1946, the gray represented Palestine, while the white represented Jewish land. As you can see, the Palestinian land has faded away over this past 75 years. It's crucial to understand the context here. Zionism is a settler colonial movement, sought to establish a Jewish state within Palestine. Zionists have formed an apartheid state where Palestinians are stripped of their basic human rights, while Jews are given more rights than Palestinians. Let me be clear, our conflict is not with the Palestinians. Our conflict is not with the Jewish people, but Zionists, who have made it acceptable to establish a Jewish state at the expense of killing and displacing Palestinians. At the UN General Assembly, Netanyahu displayed a map incorporating West Bank and Gaza as part of Israel, and this is exactly what he is doing, ethnically cleansing the Palestinians of the little land they had left. How this relates to Newport News, you may ask? Newport News signed a proclamation supporting, I quote, "the rebirth of Zionism and the miraculous return of the Jewish people to the Jewish homeland," end quote. This miraculous return led to the displacement of 85% Palestinians and thousands of Palestinians killed in 1948, and the history is repeating itself now. Please, council members, I ask you to conduct your own research before you extend your blinding support for Israel. Moving on, 17,449 is a symbolic number. More than 17,449 children and women have been killed in the past four months. But how this relates to Newport News, you may ask? Mayor Jones, your second top campaign donor was American Israel Education Foundation, donating $17,449 to your campaign. This has binded you to push their pro-Israel lobby, Newport News, instead of your constituents. The silence of this city council is deafening, and the ignorance of this council is deliberate. Dr. Woodbury, you stated that the city has to remain on prejudice, but after my last speech pointing out Newport News failed to remain on prejudice and lit up City Hall for Israel, why are you at a loss of words now? Where is the humanity in this city council's action? By steadfastly supporting Israel, Newport News and its elected leaders are complicit in its neglect for human rights and international law. I urge you to break the silence, advocate for justice and peace for all, rescind your solidarity with Israel as they carry out genocide. Start prioritizing by representing your constituents over campaign donors, and pass a ceasefire resolution. The City of Newport News is too busy walking with Israel, working on a deal with rats instead of...
Honorable members of the Newport News City Council, my name is Eric Maurer. I am a resident of Newport News on Mammoth Oak Road, and I am the privilege to serve as Executive Director of the United Jewish Community of the Virginia Peninsula, representing the Jewish community here in Newport News. I was hesitant to speak with you tonight because I believe that the subject is beyond your purview. I believe that Newport News City Council should be spending their limited, valuable, and precious time discussing important local issues. However, we have heard tonight from individuals calling for the city to issue a ceasefire resolution. This is a foreign policy issue on which the City of Newport News has no official business taking a position ad on. To add, passing a ceasefire resolution will risk creating very real and very unnecessary division in our local community. This is a foreign policy matter, and it should be dealt with as such by the proper bodies. However, I understand the emotion behind the calls for a ceasefire. No one wants more suffering and bloodshed. I mourn the loss of all innocent lives, Israelis and Palestinians, Arabs and Jews. When people call for a ceasefire, they just want the firing to stop. I understand that. Unfortunately, it's not that simple. Calling for a ceasefire will not only embolden Hamas, a brutal terrorist organization that started a war that Israel did not want. On October 7th, Hamas fighters in Gaza broke a ceasefire. They invaded Israel, and they brutally murdered, raped, beheaded, burned, and defiled an estimated 1,400 people. Hamas committed unthinkable acts of butchery without shame or remorse. In fact, the terrorists acted with euphoria and pride, even videotaping their actions. It had boasted that, given the opportunity, it will repeat October 7th again and again and again. Those who are calling for a ceasefire before Hamas is removed from power and the hostages are freed are strengthening a terrorist group and falsely painting Israel as the aggressor in this war that was forced upon them. I know you want to stand up for peace. I do, too. The only chance for peace begins with the end of Hamas rule. An immediate ceasefire would guarantee future war, bloodshed, and suffering by both Israelis and Palestinians. Honorable members of the City Council, I urge you to refrain from considering a ceasefire resolution and continue focusing on the important work this city needs from you. Thank you.
Thank you. I think last up is Freepa Liston.
Freepa Liston, for the record. In May 2023, Mayor Jones issued a proclamation for Jewish American Heritage Month. This proclamation, quote, "celebrates the rebirth of Zionism and states that the U.S. has shared values and mutual interests with the State of Israel." Well, fact-check, Judaism actually rejects Zionism, and the values and interests of Israel you were referring to must be the following: collective punishment of Palestinians, killing 145 journalists in the last 130 days, displacing over 1.9 million people, cutting off access to basic human needs, bombing safe zones for Palestinians, killing 28,000 Palestinians, including at least 10,400 children. Mayor Jones, you were able to issue this proclamation four months into your term, but four months into the ongoing genocide of Palestinians and 75-plus years under the occupation, the cat got your tongue, or should I say, AIPAC got your tongue? The hypocrisy of attending a peace rally for gun violence but supporting the same people that snipe anything that moves inside schools and hospitals? Your vision of elevating the narrative of this city on a national level? Newport News shouldn't stand for genocide. You attempted to show your solidarity by saying you might be visiting Ramallah, which is a city in the West Bank controlled by the Israeli occupation. You wouldn't have seen the hundreds of Palestinian men, women, and children that are mercilessly shot in the West Bank for being Palestinian. You wouldn't have seen where the 17-year-old Palestinian-American was killed by a sniper last month in Ramallah. Why? Because the American Israel Education Foundation was funding your trip. I would have liked to believe that our local politicians wouldn't be so brainwashed by Israel's propaganda, but you can't see over Israel's stack of money. You can't even recognize genocide and ethnic cleansing for what it is. I mean, come on, you're a Harvard grad. Councilwoman Vick, you ran for mayor in 2022. You have been a member of the City Council since 2008. You have experience being a leader for Newport News, but your campaign couldn't compete with foreign funding. Vice Mayor Bethany, you tweeted you stand with peace and included the Palestinian flag. You told me you did not stand for lighting City Hall for Israel. But what constitutes a standing for peace when there's no action to follow it? Newport News can't even retract its support for Israel and condemn the killing of innocent Palestinians after hundreds of citizens have emailed this council. Council members, what's your take? How many more children should be trapped under rubble and left to die? How many more babies should die from starvation? How many more parents should bury their children? How many more war crimes are you willing to support? Is Israel still standing in defense of their way of life as they continue to kill innocent men, women, and children? Break your silence, or this blood might not wash off your hands.
Thank you. So our next item, our next item will be new business. New business, Mr. Manager, over to you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two brief items this evening. First of all, once again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'd like to express my condolences to the family of Captain Ken Carter, Newport News, of the Newport News Fire Department, whose funeral service was conducted on yesterday. He leaves the department with, after 27 years of service for the City of Newport News and the Newport News Fire Department. Our condolences once again to his family and all those who served by his side. Also, I'd like to express my condolences to the family of Councilman Marcellus Harris. As, as you all will expand upon going forward, funeral services will be conducted for his father on, on Sunday, and Mr. Harris, again, my condolences to you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I thank the council for the warm welcome and echo Allen's condolences to Captain Carter's family and the fire department, and Councilman Harris and his family as well.
City Clerk?
Yes, sir, I'd also like to add my condolences to both families.
Councilman Law?
I want to add my condolences as well to Captain Ken Carter, as well as Reverend Marcellus Harris, well, Councilman Marcellus Harris followed Reverend Marcellus Harris. Prayers or thoughts with the family. I want to speak about the housing shelter, regional shelter. Last council meeting, the city manager spoke of the regional study that we wanted to team up with the City of Hampton, York County, James City County, Williamsburg. Homelessness is not a local issue, it's a regional, it's a state, it's a national issue. A part of the study will also not only address regional shelter, but it'll also address gaps services. Because we, back in August, City Council, we, we recognized there is an issue, and that's why we started having those conversations with, about homelessness, how our citizens wanted to move forward. Out of that, with that regional study, we're also going to look at gaps in services, because one thing is to house a person that's homeless, but it's another thing to move them up into society as a continuum of care. So part of that regional study will be addressing where, what areas we are missing as far as services. So you want to see that, that regional study go forward, so it's not going to just be a regional shelter, but it'll also be, how do we move a person that are unhoused back into society? So that's, that's coming forward, and city manager did speak about that at the last city council meeting, but I want to make sure people are clear that this study is not just to look for housing, it's also the bigger picture, how do we actually wrap around services for those that, that need. I had the privilege this past weekend to attend the RISE, Newport News Public Schools Youth Male Empowerment Program. That was an excellent program where our young men in the school system had an opportunity to learn about positive self-esteem, making good choices. I was really encouraged because there was a lot of, there was a lot of adults that attended the session, because they also had a breakout area for, for mentors that, that are here in the city, and we kind of talked about what, what do we need to do to make sure our young males in the city actually have good role models? How can we make sure they're moving in the right direction? One thing I did learn is the school system has a program called Volunteers in Public Schools. I didn't know that at the time, that if you want to volunteer, I've always heard, you know, you can go to a school and ask to, to volunteer, but they actually have a real program, and I encourage anyone that really wants to see our young people succeed and, and have good positive role models, to actually think about volunteering some of your time. And going into the schools, you can be mentors, you can be tutors, coaches. The schools have this program already set up, but I just want to encourage anyone that is looking for an opportunity to volunteer in the community to think about volunteering in our schools, because, because our kids are our future, and if we pour into our, our kids, we'll pour into a better future for ourselves. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vick?
Oh, yes, I, me, and I share the same sentiment to be able to offer my condolences to both families during this time of sorrow, sorrow, and I pray their strength during such a difficult time. time. Also, I just want to remind everybody that March 1st through the 3rd is our One City Marathon Weekend, so I hope everybody is, is getting ready to gear up to support that magnificent weekend that we started in, in our city. The choices for the different races, you can do the one, the nautical mi- one mile, the 5K, and also we have the half marathon, as well as the full marathon. And so to find out more information of the times, how to register, you can go on the, the site, onecitymarathon.com. And I'd like to thank everyone for coming out to our South District Town Hall meeting, which was held at the Main Street Library. It was an excellent turnout, and it was so great to be able to have our two city council members, Councilman Illy, as well as our, to partner with our South District School Board Representatives, Maritza Alger and Dr. Terry Bass. And, and lastly, I'd like, I'd like to thank the women of Second Baptist Church East End, the Women's Ministry, 102 years strong, for inviting me to be there, Women's Day speaker, morning breakfast speaker. It was such a great time, and as we had a great discussion on my topic about women from whence we came. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Woodbury.
Yes, I want to change, I want to also express my condolences for the people who have lost. And I also want to thank all of you for coming and being so passionate about what you believe is important. But I think the overriding thing I want to say is that I love Newport News, and I love all of you for what you do. And I love you for having your beliefs and for feeling passionately about them. But I ask also that you, I'm going to wish you a happy Valentine's Day, because love is the only thing that has ever cured any crisis. So please try to listen to that and express it in your life. That's why I have all my heart on. Tomorrow's Happy Thanks Valentine's Day. But it's important that we learn even to love those who don't agree with us. And it's the only thing that has ever solved anything in this life. So I implore you to see your fellow man as a fellow man and to understand their passion and their beliefs, that you will consider what they say and what they do. So I love you, Newport News. I love you, all of you people, for coming down and expressing it and being very passionate about what it is. But love one another as well, and care about one another, and respect one another. That is what I ask. So my love to you, Happy Valentine's Day tomorrow, and may you find love in your life always. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Illy.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out today to speak, speak on your opinion and your voices. Your voices was definitely heard, and we definitely appreciate when people and citizens come out and express their concerns. That's what moves Newport News forward. I also like to give my condolences to the two families that lost their lives, King Carter and Councilman Marcellus Harris. My prayers would be with you and your family through this difficult time. I also had the opportunity a few weeks ago to partner with Brooks Cross, and we did a youth vision board party. It was so cool to see so many young kids across Newport News come out and describe what their vision is, not just for this year, but their vision is when they become adults. So that was very cool to see. Also had the opportunity to attend the Rosa Parks Ceremony at HRT. That was good to see so many local officials of government and community leaders come out to celebrate Rosa Parks on this memorial. And just happy holidays, happy Valentine's Day, and happy Black History Month. And thank you once again for everyone who came out today to speak. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I too would like to thank everyone for coming out. I'm also going to give condolences to Councilman Marcellus Harris on the passing of his father. In addition to that, Mr. Ken Carter, I had the pleasure of meeting him during the firefighter graduation and got to hear his powerful testimony. And so just want to say that my, my thoughts, my prayers are with the families of both. Last two things I got is my grandmother's birthday today. She turned 87, so Granny, happy birthday to you, love you, and stay away from the casino. And then lastly, so tomorrow, not only is Valentine's Day, but is my wife's birthday. So you would think that, you know, I could, I could, I could save a little bit of money, but no, that just means you just spend double. And so to you, I know you're watching, happy birthday to you, and I will see you in a few minutes. So with that being said, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice. I'll try to, try to wrap up. So I think it's important to speak about Captain Carter. You know, someone that did 27 years to the fire department, someone that, that served this community. We, we really appreciate all of our first responders, and I know on behalf of myself and, and Alan and Beau, it was good to see the community come together and to, to recognize someone who literally gave his entire life in service of our community. So we, we appreciate Captain Carter, not only his sacrifice, but his family as well. And we say it often in the, in the military, but I, you know, we've got the watch room here, so we appreciate you, sir. Councilman Harris, who is unfortunately was not able to make it with the passing of his father. B2 is a, is a, is a quiet man. He's like an introvert. He cares a lot about the youth and would like everyone to be there to support him on, on Sunday if we're able, for, for city council. He's an integral part of this council. He's, I would say, the, the heart and soul of this thing. So the Councilman Harris, we, we really do appreciate you. And thank you so much for everyone who, who came out. We appreciate the comments, the concerns. You know, as, as mayor, it's sort of prerogative. I could, we could do like other cities and say, you can only speak for one minute. You could say, you could only speak for things that are germane to council. I think it's important for people to come out and make their voice heard. So as long as I'm mayor, everyone, whether we agree or disagree, can able to come out and let their voice heard. But thank you so much, and have a happy Valentine's Day. We stand adjourned. Thank you.